Call to order, City Council Work Sessions for CDB's Grand Forks for Tuesday, July 23rd. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Lander.
Here.
Council President Mark Goldstein.
Here.
Council Vice President Karen Reifert.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Beck.
Here.
Ben Fox-Jevinsky.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does term call number one request to fill vacant position, Mr. Stortall?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Cletus Land has been working for Public Works for almost 40 years. And he put in his resignation letter, he will be done August 30th of this year. And we are asking for approval to get the hiring process started to fill the vacancy that he will leave.
Questions?
Done.
Going to be a hard guide if...
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Number two, request input for cannabis ordinance, Mr. Utten.
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. President, council members. Probably a lot to unpack with this one, so I'll try to walk through it step by step. And if, as I go, with some of the questions we have, if there's places you'd like to just interject a question or thought, please do. I'll try to kind of break it into subcategories here. In general, we put a work group together out of our kind of city visioning sessions back in February, put a staff work group together to start reviewing the cannabis rules and regulations the state has handed out. And have been waiting patiently for some additional guidance from the state. Some of that has started to come out now in the last month or so. I did link that, there's a guide for local governments, I linked in the packet, that's a pretty good document that makes it a little easier to understand what local government has an ability to regulate. Basically, what we largely have the ability to control is our zoning, where each of the different business types in the community would be allowed to be, or be permitted to be located. Some of the time, place, and manner of business operations, like the hours of operations, we have some control over that. The statute has control over it as well, Minnesota statute. And then setting retail business registration fees. We have the ability to control or to set, to some parameter, how we would collect those registrations. Again, there is some guiding principles in the Minnesota statute for those parameters. The first one we looked at, and quite honestly, the one we have looked, spent the most time looking at, is zoning. In the state statute, it allows for a municipality to prohibit operations of a cannabis business of each of the license types within 1,000 feet of a school and/or 500 feet of a daycare, a residential drug treatment facility, or an attraction in a public park that's regularly used by minors. And so, as a group, we've looked through a few different levels of buffer zones within those parameters. We looked at 1,000 feet from a school and 500 feet from a park. We looked at 750 feet from a school and 300 from a park, or even down to 500 feet from a school and 250 feet from a park. If we went all the way to the 1,000 feet for a school and 500 from a park, generally speaking, we would nearly zone out all of our commercial districts. Because the location of some of the schools, the proximity to Highway 220, the proximity to our downtown, 1,000 feet from a school would just about clip all of those commercial districts where there's existing business fronts or facilities that could have a retail operation in them. And it felt like to the group, there was probably an interest in allowing the retail locations or location, however many we decide, to be within those zoned for commercial business, rather than industrial. And largely being that our commercial areas are already set up for business traffic of that nature, from a traffic flow perspective. Industrial park typically has a much different user from a traffic and a vehicle size and frequency of use. So we didn't feel like, as a group, we felt it was appropriate to zone any of these retail locations into industrial, that they'd be better set for commercial. So we sort of walked that back to looking at our downtown commercial and our highway commercial areas with those buffer zones of 750 feet from a school and 300 feet from a park or a licensed daycare center. And differentiating that, not a home daycare. Of course, we wouldn't allow retail business to be located within a residential area. So that should clip off most of those home daycares, but we wanted to have a real strong parameter on the definition of what the daycare center means, so we're keeping that in as a licensed daycare, or a licensed childcare center or facility. So I think that's the first maybe stopping point, is as we look at zoning, is we're looking for feedback from the council. I listed in the packet, there are a number of different business types. Largely, the retail is what we'd be looking at for that downtown or highway commercial. Most of the other business or license types that the state could potentially issue are surrounding cultivation, manufacturing of cannabis products, transport, wholesale delivery. So those are all, we're recommending that those would all be in our light industrial or general industrial. But the retail locations, we are looking at for those downtown and highway commercial places with those buffers of 750 feet from a school or 300 feet from a park or childcare facility. Generally, maybe that's a good place to stop, or take, if there's any thoughts on, or concerns about that.
The maps you have in there, what...
Yeah.
...are those in?
Thank you. So the maps are showing that, those parameters of 750 feet from a school, 300 from, like the first one you see is Sherlock Park, that would be 300 feet from the perimeter of Sherlock Park.
So we only have use of one side of Demers, the River Cinema, correct? I mean, looking at this correctly?
Yes.
And then maybe the old Hamm's Building?
Yep, correct.
I think the way that you've laid that out is very good. And the reason is, you know, we've given word to our people that as the statute came out, it was waiting for clarification. Now here we are, receiving the clarification. And our intent was never to, in some sneaky way, to try to zone these out of our community altogether. Our hope would be to bring them in, in the most orderly way that we can, best fit for everything that's nearby them, protecting the kids like we're doing from certain places where they gather. So I think if you'd have gone to the max and effectively boxed them out of our commercial zones, it would have, to me, would have been a breach of good faith with our people, which we've told them already, we're just waiting until we get clarification on how to do it best for our community. So I think you're on the right track with those numbers and not trying to go to the max.
And also on there, it looks like 220, everything is out of it, or within that 750, except when you get to like, where the Domino's is at?
Yeah, yeah, we did look at like, and made a point of looking at those, kind of the Domino's, where the trailer store is, along that frontage, there would be some ability there. I will say that, though, even at, if we looked at 500 feet from the senior high property, that still stretches to the east side of 220, even at that parameter it would. So we felt like, just for consistency's sakes, it felt to us that 750 was the best. And I think maybe just, I didn't say that, but it's worth pointing out, is the effort here with, our proposed effort with the buffer zones is to make every effort we can to ensure that there isn't a potential for a cannabis store to locate itself across the street from a place that minors would regularly spend their time.
Anybody else, anything on that zoning?
Okay, move on. The next question, and probably one of the more important ones, is inside a business registration, by ordinance and by state statute, the municipality will be required, for a community of our size, be required to have one retail location permitted for every 12,500 residents. There is a potential in the statute for that to not be the case, and that would be, there's a rule that if the county as a whole has, Ron, if I'm wrong here, I, we're looking at it, it would be three. I think the county would need to maintain that same ratio of one per 12,500 residents. So if for some reason those happened all out in Polk County, it would meet the requirement for the city to have a retail location. And based on Polk County population of about 30,000 people, it would be three in the county that would meet the minimum requirement. But we are looking and considering that at a minimum, we should expect East Grand Forks to have applications for one at a minimum. We have the ability to limit it to one, if that's our desire. It doesn't have to have any limit on it at all. It can have a limit anywhere between one and whatever number we would decide as a group by ordinance. But the minimum we should expect is one. The work group, the discussion largely has been around if the council would agree, starting with one, so that we have an ability to probably better understand the market and the demand. And in that event, that we feel there's a need to increase, we could always increase the number of registrants that we'd allow in our ordinance. If we start really high, or no limit at all, and the potential is the market gets really overwhelmed with applicants, it'd be difficult or impossible for us to go backwards. But we're certainly open to any direction on that.
I think we should maybe consider two, for the fact that I'd be concerned with just one retail location becoming a potential monopoly, and then there isn't any competition in the pricing. And then if that, if that one licensed firm fails, then we don't have the opportunity for another successful business to kind of thrive. So I would think we would look at up to two locations as a place to start, rather than just one. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson.
I think I would like to see us go with a minimum of two also, just from the standpoint of the way that businesses have to operate, where you're only allowed to have so many people in the actual store at a time. And so it becomes a possible, potential safety hazard for the people who are having to stand outside for a significant amount of time. Now, is the argument that this is going to be a fad and that we won't see that? Maybe, but then again, maybe not, especially when we will be next door to a larger populated city, where it has been explained to me that in some places, they have had to wait outside for anywhere from two to three hours. And it is an all cash business too, and so, I don't know, I guess I would like to see more than, more than one.
The decision were to start with one, so that we can get the regulatory side of it down, and our police, if there would be a police presence, you know, that would be an awareness that had to happen, with the wording that up to this, up to six months or so, the second one could be rolled out, I think that would be fine. And I think is a worthwhile consideration also, we're thinking of buffer zones from all these other areas, do we want to have a buffer zone between the two establishments? That they would not be one on top of the other, of some certain minimum distance between them?
If I can address that. That was a discussion point in our work group, is if we can, through our ordinance, zone one into the downtown commercial and one into the highway commercial, so one each per district, that would, that would create that separation. We, Ron has been doing, Mr. Goldstein has been doing a lot of research and work on this too, I appreciate all his time on that, but that's one that we've sort of reached out to the Office of Cannabis Management to understand if, if that's within our legal zoning to do that. But, so a lot that still needs guidance on that.
Just to add to that, the, well, regarding the retail, the mezzo and the micro businesses also can be, also have a retail aspect to them. And so we've got some questions to the Office of Cannabis Management, I've submitted regarding, if you have two, do we still have to allow two more that would be within the mezzo, we'll say, in the micro businesses? They're getting back to me. I think this is still highly a work in progress on what their, what their statute is saying. There's, there's all kinds of different scenarios and different information, but there's not really a specific. I do believe that we would be able to separate the stores, because it, we'd be satisfying the one per 12,500, so to speak, if you wanted to be able to put a distance between them. But there's, like I said, there's still a lot of research and unknowns that's, that are going on right now regarding zoning. And then, I believe that the limitation, we're only required to have one retail specifically for our population base. I'm, I'm looking into it a little bit further, not saying that you don't want to have any of these other businesses, but you may be able to limit that, or restrict mezzo, my, you know, all, micro, all of those types of businesses, as long as you satisfy that retail requirement. And then I need direction from the council as well, that's why we're here.
Mr. Vedder.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know one of your questions, Reed, was if we have more than one, or if we have one, if we limit the number of licenses that we're giving out, how are we going to select who gives them? And that's my concern, if we limit it, even if we have two, how do we decide which two are going to get it? I'd be in favor of just no limit on them. I'll qualify that, I don't think we should have any to begin with, but if we're going to have them, why put limits on them? I don't know how I would decide which two or one would get the license, that'd be hard.
You know, it could explode early with one on every corner, I know that would be an extreme example, and then you, I think what you're saying is, the free market will regulate itself as to how many can be profitable and stay in operation. I think you may have an initial surge that would be hard to work with if you had no limit. And then it would dwindle down to what the market can bear.
Thank you. Reed, do we have it in here, how the whole selection process goes?
Yeah, I did detail that in the, a little bit, in the questions that I proposed, that Mr. Vedder's referencing is, the, and maybe to expand on it, the order of events is a person interested in applying to receive a license, that the license is issued from the state. They would submit an application with a bunch of review and parameters to the state of Minnesota, and the state would give that an initial review and contact the city that they have a potential, you see the example of a retail license holder, that they're going to give preliminary approval to, to receive the license to operate. And at that point, that retailer would reach out to the city to, they may, in one case, they may already have a location that they've, that they've acquired or already have, that they intend to sell from, and we would need to review it to make sure that it fits with our ordinance and our zoning. Or in the other case, they could apply without a location in hand, and they could have, be offered a preliminary license from the state, and then use our local zoning to determine or find a location that meets the license that they are going to receive. We'd have a 30-day, in either of those cases, the city would have a 30-day review process to then report back to the state that, that they're in compliance with our local zoning. That doesn't answer the question of if there are multiple, and that's certainly a scenario that could come. We need to define that in our ordinance of if there are multiple that get approval from the state at the same time, or simultaneous of each other, how are we going to decide? And this, the recommendations from the state lay out a number of options, a use of a lottery system, a first come, first served basis, a rolling basis, a number, but that's ultimately up to us in our local ordinance for control. If I could, maybe just, Mr. Vedder, I, I hear clearly what you're saying, and I'll take any direction from the council, just offer a little perspective. I've had a conversation with one local person that is in the cannabis business elsewhere. And where they are in it elsewhere, they indicated that there were no limits on the business, the number of businesses that could operate, and their concern was, they actually said that they would recommend we don't have an unlimited number, if it's in our control, because the market could become so oversaturated so quickly that it's impossible for anybody to be successful from a business perspective. And that's not to say that will happen here. That's a different states where they were a lot quicker to the legal cannabis world than Minnesota is. And there was a lot, of course, a boom of activity and business growth, everyone thinking it was the next gold rush. So it's not to say that that would happen here, but just for perspective, that, that has been offered to me.
Thanks, Reed. Yeah, I guess initially, my opinion was we would have at least two locations, but after thinking about it and discussing it in the work group, I, I think I'm in the position that we start with one, and then have, you know, a, I think a six-month review period would be good. And if we can handle a second one, if we think that the initial location is busy enough to have a second location, I think that would be the next best move. And just piggybacking off of Reed, we've got two or three or four locations in town that offer the, like, THC gummies, I think is what they are. There's potential that none of those businesses get a license, get permission from the state of Minnesota to operate in town here, so then we might be, there might be another entity outside of town that, that comes in, and then there's another location that we'd have to consider. So, thank you.
Vedder.
Thank you. My question would be, how would you evaluate them after six months? I mean, it's a private business, so you know, require them to give you financial statements? And who's to say, hey, yep, you're doing good? I don't want that on my shoulders. That'd be a hard one, too.
Yeah. I don't have an answer for that. I definitely don't think we would be asking for financial statements. I think I would base it on, you know, just an eye test, do we see that there's, you know, always people there? Is the parking lot full? I think the police department might have an opinion on it as well, depending upon how many calls that they're getting to that location, or, you know, are there calls coming throughout the city where this product is becoming a problem? So that's how I would start to look at it, it's probably going to need to be more complex than that. But, yeah, thank you.
I would ask that if we start up in that fashion, to make sure to tell that first one, we are open to a second. Because it would otherwise be six months later, wait a minute, sure, you see that we're making money here, you're just putting in competition for us. So if they know ahead of time that our long-range plan would be up to two, then there'd be no sense of, you know, that we, some way betrayed what we told them at the front end. I'd hope they would know it right away.
Ms.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are these license, will they be set up to operate similar, like a liquor license type thing, where, I mean, is there an age limit where they can buy, and is there, will there be like penalties if they sell to minors and that type of thing, kind of along the same line as a, is that kind of the way it would be set?
Yeah, Mr. Elms, I think that's, the alcohol laws are probably the closest aligned to what it would, what you'd expect it to look like. There's certainly age limits on, on how old you need to be able to be, have to be to buy it, and there'd be a requirement that our local police department conduct an annual compliance check, to make sure that they're IDing people properly.
I could, Chief, would you please give us a quick synopsis of how you will decide if someone's driving impaired? I mean, you can do a breathalyzer for alcohol, what do you do for weed?
Just don't stop the mayor.
That's actually still being researched quite extensively by our state and other states. It's, I'm not aware of any de facto level that of, the amount a person could have in their system at this point in time. It's largely going to be observations based on, from the officers after they make a traffic stop, and then a subsequent test that would indicate that the person did have THC in their system, but it's, you know, that's, it's a grayer area now, in my opinion, than it was before it was legalized.
Would there be several steps involved? So you had probable cause based on you saw some impaired activity, then some way they'd probably have to have some blood work done to look for THC, something would have to trigger that. I'm sure we're off on the deep end here, but we should know that right now. I think we should, we should have a sense of that right now.
Well, just from a prosecution standpoint, I don't think that it's any different than any other impaired driving DWI. Basically, you would have the reasonable suspicion to stop based upon driving conduct, then you would have some, you would have your field sobriety testing if you were going to do that, whether or not you had any impairment observations there. Even you may end up having a DRE, a drug recognition expert that would come in and just evaluate based upon probable cause. And then if they were impaired, you would arrest them for DW, or driving while impaired, you'd bring them down. If there was no alcohol, then there would ultimately have to be some type of a test, whether it would be a urine or a blood test. But even with that test, that test would only show that there was a level of THC in their system. And so there isn't anything currently, anywhere that I'm aware of, that would give you a level that says, if you, like a DWI right now, is anything over a .08 broad-bread alcohol concentration, which is an automatic violation of the, of the statute? There's nothing in place, nor anywhere that I'm aware of, that would, you'd be able to have it that way. And so, so it would then become a question of impairment, observations, testimony, the fact that there was THC available, and then all of that evidence, if it was going to be contested, would be presented to a jury, just like any other DWI, with a, you know, beyond reasonable doubt that they were driving impaired. A lot of times you'll have, we'll say, THC consumption with some alcohol consumption, which would show up, which would show up as well. It would just be an added evidentiary issue that you would present. But right now, that's, you treat it, I believe, as, at least from a prosecution standpoint, like any other impaired driving offense.
Thanks.
Thank you. Larson?
Yeah, just a few comments or questions here, kind of a multi-parter. I am concerned about, starting with just one retail location, I do believe the business model is going to be very much boom, and then a big drop after the novelty wears off for 95% of the customers. And so there is the opportunity for that, that initial firm, if there was just one, to take advantage of that, that initial interest in, in the novelty or the excitement of it. And then as it drops, which, which I think it will, then the, the business pool would open up. So that'd be something to be aware of. We really haven't addressed, you know, in any detail how we would select one, two, or three, however many firms, that's challenging. I wonder if we could consider some sort of impartial assessment on qualifications, or review of business plan, or, you know, financial backing. A way to do that in a small community where we all pretty much know each other, but, but still really understand, you know, what is... really understand, you know, what is, what's the potential for job creation? Is there, is there criminal history? Is there, is there things that could be reviewed by an impartial panel as we select who, who or anyone would have the opportunity to start this type of business? Mr. Galstead, maybe you have a comment on that?
The only comment that would have it, I think the licensing, licensing aspect of it is by the state. And, and so then, once they are able to be licensed, then I think it would be up to us to be able to determine if we're going to have one, two, or three. It's almost going to be a lottery. And then to your, to your comment, I guess, regarding whether there's criminal history, under the social equity portion of this thing, a lot of people that, well, there's actually a benefit if you were, if you were actually convicted of a marijuana crime or of a crime on those aspects, to actually getting qualified under the social equity aspect of it as opposed to opposed or a detriment. So that'd be a little bit difficult, too. You may be able, and then I think the state on their own, in their, and I haven't seen all of the information, but there's going to be restrictions on different types of felony offenses and stuff already. So I think it's just going to be up to us to either flip a coin, first come, first serve, have a lottery, you know, basically a lottery system where if we have five of them and we're going to allow two, throw everybody's name in a hat and pull a number, you know, and there you have it. But we'll have to figure out something.
Okay, and then just one final, and frustrating, there isn't more local control, but I'm yelling into the void there. I'm not very clear on the difference between, I understand retail, that's very clear, but the micro and the mezzo business, the only comparison I can think of is those are like similar to a micro brewery where, you know, the product would be produced on-site and then consumed on-site as well? Is, can you define that?
Yeah, the definitions of all of that stuff is really kind of a little bit confusing because you can have like a one-shop stop, so to speak. And if you're a micro, you can have a one-shop stop, only one store. With a mezzo, I think you can have up to five different operations, and they don't have to be located in any single community. And so all of that is being worked out as well. But you're right, it's, and that was, that kind of came down to my question to the state was when we're, if in fact we are limiting, say, the retail operation to two, but you have one or two of these micro or mezzo operations, which when you look at it can have a, do have a retail component to them, does that, are they lumped into our two retail operations or not? Because if they were the first two to be, we'll say, licensed in the industrial park, and they have the retail component, does that allow, you know, if we're going to limit our, you know, we're in control on however we draft our ordinance, so to speak, but would that limit that? And then vice versa? Could they have a, we'll just say a mezzo operation here, but not have the retail aspect of it due to the fact that we have our two licenses, if that's what we're talking about, in place? So I'm, I'm asking for those answers, and I haven't, I haven't gotten anything back at this point. I just gotta, I did get a response that said, thanks for your question, we'll get back to you.
I don't think from, as I read on this page, six of 15, it seems to me that micro and mezzo, so they can cultivate and package for resale, may operate one retail location, that's micro, and mezzo cultivate and package for resale may operate up to three retail locations. And those have to be in light and general industrial. Those cannot be in the commercial districts at all. Okay? And so therefore, now they get one or three retail locations, we may or may not allow them any in our community. We might say, sure enough, you can have one or three, depending on which of those you are, not here. Right? So your industrial aspect can be here, you can have one or three retail somewhere, but not here, because ours are all taken up.
Vedder? Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just thinking back, and maybe Mr. Galstead or the mayor can remember with me. It seems like we used to have a limit on our liquor licenses. Once it was wide open, and then the state limited to how many you could have per population also, and now it's wide open again. When the limit was there, do you recall how we chose which ones got their license?
I remember it was the mayor's wife one time. But we're not going to do that.
Not your wife.
No, no. That was our dear mayor, Louie Murray. What kind of mayor am I if I cannot get a liquor license for my wife? But that's not now. That was, that was a bygone era. I don't know how we would do it now.
So maybe this, the city staff might want to research past to see how we decided on liquor license way back when.
A lot back then was there was already liquor licenses that were issued, so then they put a limit on it. And then it was on whether or not we had enough. And then if somebody fell out, how we were going to, you know, who was going to be able to get it, was it, were they selling it? I don't think that we ever had a problem where there was, you know, five openings and 10 people asking for those openings, because it was kind of a progressive thing, they were already in place.
Well, I think the fees were pretty hefty.
Well, the fees were hefty, too. And then in this case, we don't have much, we don't have much say in the fees. We, they're statutory, so we can, we can get renewal fees and we can get those types of fees.
My point is, if we want to learn something from the liquor side of it, is why put any limits on it? Let's just open it up, and whoever meets the criteria gets a license. Be done with it.
Thank you.
Did you want to clarify? Because we did talk about the mezzo.
Would end up being, oh, sorry, where those would end up being, having to be in the industrial area. And we didn't necessarily want, or the group talked about not wanting to have one out there just because of the demographic of the roads and et cetera.
Yep.
And I don't know if you wanted to touch base on that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. That is a question that Mr. Galstead has submitted to the Office of Cannabis Management. Again, on the mezzo and micro business, what we're showing on that, that table that Mayor Gander referenced is that we would, those would be permitted in light and general industrial and not in our downtown or highway commercial. That's largely leaning towards the cultivation and packaging side of that business operation. We wouldn't, we don't desire for, if they have a retail location, that it be permitted in industrial. We would want that arm of their business, that division of their business to be in the downtown or highway commercial. But we did submit that question to the state, if that's, if it is allowed to be separated. We're not clear on that. If it's, we assume it is, because mezzo business allows up to three locations, but we're waiting for clarity from the state on that answer.
The other quick comment that I have is, is just the idea of having more than one location, where if you do compare it theoretically to liquor stores or off-sale, we do have multiple locations within the city. Do I think that we could go unlimited? I'm not super in love with that idea, but I do think more than one location would not necessarily be a terrible idea.
I think looking at it, and looking at two would be my preference right away, but I guess we can all always look at it and go, okay, well, if we have two now, can we revisit down the road and say we're going to open up to more? I guess maybe controlling it, I mean, looking at the map, if you're going to have one downtown, one on the highway, I mean, you're not going to have that many locations anyway that are, can be permitted. Because looking at the map, it's pretty covered. I mean, even on Highway Two, I mean, there's a open lot there, there's not going to be much in there anyway, so. And the other locations out there, you know, maybe someone will rent a spot next to St. Michael's, I don't know.
Looking at the map, I, I'm kind of against this letting one-sided Demers have it wide open and the other side restricting them just because of the, you're walking across the street, I don't think it's going to affect that too much. I think we could make some exception to open up the Demers Avenue corridor a little more. I just, I think it'd be a mistake on our part just to limit it. I mean, if they're going to, if they're close enough to the school, they're going to walk that extra half a block across the street or...
I mean, I looked at that, too, because you look at Demers there, I mean, everything from Cabela's all the way down to, you know, almost City Hall, I mean, is limited.
So I think, just if I can ask the question, and thinking aloud to it, is then with that noted, if we look at the Highway 220 corridor, recognizing the proximity of senior highs campus, are we okay that even at a 500-foot buffer from schools, let's say, that both sides of 220 would be prohibited? It's, but you know, if you're looking at that block from, let's call it 17th Street, back to, you know, nearly to McDonald's, that, that whole area is still going to be with a buffer prohibition, prohibit? If we're okay with that, you know, then I think that opens that up. We could look at more of a 500-foot or so, 600-foot buffer from schools.
I mean, what are the requirements now for the strip mall there, where that one store's at? I mean, if they're allowed to be there?
Yeah. So there are no requirements right now. We have no ordinance or no zoning in place for, for the low potency edibles.
State?
No.
Nothing?
No. And, and I should, that's a good point of clarification. And a lot of what we're talking about tonight, it is, it is for the full cannabis. Those, those low potency edibles would still be permitted, as far as our discussion for tonight, would still be permitted in the locations they're in. It's would they qualify for our zoning to have a full cannabis retail?
I'm just going back to, you know, Mr. Pachivinsky's comment about existing people that we have already. I mean, there's existing places that are within that map that is prohibited now. So in a sense, can they say, well, you're not going to allow us to flourish and do this? You know, we're here.
Yeah, they're here with a given license.
Yeah, I get it. I'm not campaigning out to allow to do it, I'm just saying. I mean, you could poke holes in this thing, I mean, you could look at the roads, look, you know, Tim brought up the Demers, you know, you're looking at that, looking at 220, I mean, you can look all the way out. I mean...
If I may?
Yes.
And I, and maybe this is just inferred and everybody understands it, but the, the limitations that we're talking about, the buffer zones, they're a may, not a shall. So, I mean, you could actually open it up and have zero buffer zones if that's the case. It's just, I'm not, not suggesting that, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, that, that we're looking at it to try, at least as the group that we were talking about, the cannabis committee, to try to limit it from the, the children in the community as much as possible, but be fair enough to open up corridors in zoning areas that we could have businesses that would be able to sell the product legally. And just due to the shape and size of the city of East Grand Forks, and the locations of the schools and the parks, and the treatment facilities, really kind of limits some of the, some of those buffer zones when you look at it. And it just becomes kind of a difficult proposition. And, and also in the fact that none of them can be in residential, you know, and our residential are technically butted right up against all of these corridors, so to speak, so.
One thing that we haven't talked about too much is that there are still lots of people in our community that want none of these. And so the fact that we're putting these reasonable constraints is still to be mindful of those people who, their preference would be to have none of these, right? Versus, and I get it, Mr. Vedder, you are an economist, and a pure economist, saying, you know what, free market can take care of itself. I'm very much in that same camp, but I'm just tempered a little bit by trying to be mindful of, again, those residents who, really? Do we really have to do this? The answer is yes, we have to do this according to state statute, we do have to do this, and we'll do it in the most orderly way that we can to open the door for residents to make these purchases. But again, still mindful of, of those residents who, their preference would be to have none of them.
Want to be honest on that? Mr. Helms?
Yeah, just a comment to make here is that, and your remark there, Mayor, I'm kind of one of those people that don't really want to see it, but I know I, I can't fight it, so I'm going to have to get on board with it, but I'm thinking more so along the line of, like, my type of business I'm in. That's why I don't want to see this stuff come in, because it's going to make it really hard for, for people like me and other people that have trucks and things like that. And it's, it's going to be a difficult problem out there. And I think the chief could probably agree with me there, it's just, that's the only reason I, I don't like to see it, but I know it's going to happen. So I mean, I'm, but I, I like to see the 700, is that 750-foot buffer on there, right, Reed?
Yep.
I like to see that, because I don't think that we really want to, I don't think we want to put it right out there in front of our kids. I mean, it's going to be bad enough the way it is, I don't think we want to throw it right in their face kind of thing, so I'd like to see that buffer there, like that. But, but I know it's common, so we just got to deal with it. But it's going to be, it's going to be a problem for a lot of businesses when, when this stuff really starts taking hold. I know it has in other communities already, but that's, that's my big take on it.
Thank you, yeah. Good conversation. It seems like maybe we could consider allowing retail in the downtown district, and then that, that would address Councilman Riappel's, I think, really smart comments about both side of Demers. You know, we could have major valuation of commercial real estate changes if things are allowed on one side of the road and not on the other. But then maybe stick to the buffer outside of the downtown district area. Kind of a hybrid approach.
I know that 220 is tough, because then you have Civic Center and It's Williams Park there, I mean, so you're, I mean, you got it from one side to the other.
Yeah, I, unfortunately, a lot of these products are, are like marketed to young people, you know, they're like treats, and it's like, it's not good. And so it, having it away from our most populated groups of young people at our, in our school, I think is in our best interest. Sacred Heart does get pretty close there to downtown, so we'll have to monitor that as well.
I guess the other thing, too, is let's see if Sacred Heart does expand. I mean, ever, I mean, that map's going, map's going to change. I mean, just thinking long-term for that place, you know? So.
Thank you, no problem. We did discuss in the committee about allowing it in downtown, just doing that. And I believe, Ron, I think the conversation was, you can't say it can be here. The, I think the way that the state has worded it is, there are ways that you can prohibit it based on buffer zones, and that's about it. We can't say we want to have it here. That was what the initial discussion actually was, was like, we feel it would be best here or here. But after getting clarification from the state, it was, there, it's buffers, and that's it. So, I mean, the, the buffer doesn't need to be, if we want to include Demers Avenue, the Demers Avenue corridor, we're at 750 feet, could we change it to 650? Would that solve the problem? Right? It doesn't, it doesn't need to be 500, 750, 1,000. It's anywhere from, I think, Reed, it's like 1,000 or less, right?
Yeah.
So it's whatever, whatever footage we want it to be between that number, we can do that. But we can't say in the ordinance, oh, downtown East Grand Forks is okay, but then 750 feet from every other spot in town, you know, that's where the buffer is. then 750 feet from every other spot in town, you know, that's where the buffer is. It's just got to be a specific buffer.
Me again. And I'm not exactly sure on the the exact reasoning behind it, other than our downtown commercial district was was actually the the block behind Cabela's. So for us to just say downtown business district, it was running right up alongside of of the church. And so I'm waiting for a little bit more clarification on that, too, if you could say downtown business district. But if you did that, there's nothing that says that there wouldn't be a a store that would try to pop up in that area. And then now it's, if we're going to have a buffer zone, it's within that buffer zone. So we were trying to work with buffer zones as opposed to nothing at all, or or just allowing it in one area or another, because we would have had to have redeveloped our downtown business district based upon on that discussion.
I think with the comments we've heard from the council on the desire, if there's desire to have both sides of our Demers Avenue strip be available, we can take that back and play with some some buffer zone distance distances to see what accomplishes that. You being mindful of both the downtown district and that 220 corridor, 220 North corridor, and just play with, you know, we can, the park, the the proximity to parks and daycare facilities can go up to 500 feet, and the school can go up to 1,000. So, you know, we can potentially play with both of those numbers and try to find something that makes it as equitable as possible for both districts.
Good work, you guys. Thanks for doing the front end work before before it came here. And I think we were wise to wait for some clarification from the state. And I think we're following through in good faith to what we said we'd do. So thanks, everybody.
Anything else you want to go over with this?
Well, the last question I had is really probably a quick one is just the business hours. I listed that. We discussed Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. There is an ability to go a little earlier on the Monday through Saturday, as early as 8:00 a.m. if we wanted to allow it. But for consistency, to make sure that if there is a big influx of heavy traffic at the day the business opens, right at, let's say, 8:00 a.m., the discussion was, let's start it at 10:00 a.m. so that the normal rush hour and traffic from the rest of the community flow is kind of through before the doors would open and we'd have a big buildup of people, assuming we see what we're going to see when some of the reservations open and there are people lined up around the block. That was maybe some of the background of that thought process.
Maybe Sunday noon, just as an idea.
And I don't know that we have the ability to do that.
Maybe not.
But I think the state, the state statute, we'll revisit that because we did look at it, but I think the state says 10:00 a.m. is the latest you can open.
Eleven, I think.
Well, yeah, I'll go, we'll go back to the statute and see if that's the desire is to go as late as possible on Sunday within the parameters of the statute, we can do that. Yeah, Monday through Saturday, it's 8:00 a.m. And that's maybe, I think, where I got the 10:00 a.m. number is Sunday, I believe that we could restrict it to be no earlier than 10. It's all in an ordinance.
Yeah, we don't have to open up at eight.
No.
There's, there's that limitation that we can do. It's, it's just, and that statute regarding the time was a little bit confusing, the way they had it written.
Anybody have any comments on the hours of operation? 10 to 9 fine with everyone?
I'm good with the 10 to 9.
Good. That's it for now. We'll bring back more information as we gather it.
Wonder, wonder, wonder.
All right, number three, request direction on planned use of general fund reserves in 2023 surplus.
Good. Thank you, Mr. President. As Carla is handing out kind of a summary of the building maintenance fund, I'll get started. You'll all recall, as we went through our 2023 audits and review of 2023, we had a pretty substantial surplus. And it raised our total general fund balance. Looking at if we spend and collect, have expenditures and revenues as budgeted for 2024, our projected general fund balance at the end of 2024 would be at about 55%. And that is including we we budgeted, if you recall, in 2024, we budgeted to use 174,000 from our reserves to balance the budget. So even with that, if we spend fully to budget, the general fund reserves would be sitting at 55%, which equates to about 675,000, 5% of expenditures. When I, when we look at the general parameters of the general fund reserve of 35 to 50% of our expenditures, that dollar amount is 675,000. So staff are working really hard. Carla's been working really hard on starting to put together our proposed budget for 2025. We would expect over the next few weeks to get closer to a place to be ready to present that to council, planning August work sessions to do that. At this point, we thought it would be mindful of us to bring forward the discussion of the surplus and if there's thought from the council on how to spend it or save it or any other direction you may have within that. And I will say, this is sort of brought forward in light of when we budgeted last year, we're going through our budget discussions last year, we talked a little bit about the fire station two renovation and the Chief Bush, he presented that to the group. He is ready to bring back the proposal to have plans and specs done for that project, which is part of our 2024 building maintenance budget. So the funds are budgeted for that this year, but we will certainly need some additional direction from council on how we're going to fund that project and to what degree. That, he will be prepared. He's not, he's on vacation today. He would certainly be prepared for the future work session, probably the next work session, to be able to bring that item forward. But lack of being able to give him direction on how we will fund the project, we thought we should start with this discussion of the reserves and get everyone's kind of general feeling on budget goals and goals for these excess funds from last year as we move forward. So open for any questions or thoughts.
I know I sent you some things that I thought of. One thing I didn't put on there was actually, have we heard anything on our our health insurance?
We do not have an answer on health insurance. We, it is out for renewal. We're expecting by mid-August, we'll get an answer on what a renewal looks like. And we're also have, are sending it out to the market to see what open new market proposals would look like. But this time, don't have an answer.
I mean, that's going to hinge on, and if we get a huge increase, that's really going to throw a wrench into everything. But things that I sent you, here's my thoughts, I guess, tax levy more, no, no more than 3% this year, reserve balance, no less than 50%. And then look at capital improvements list that was delayed over just last year or two. So, and then we talked about the list of projects in 2025. Do we have, do we have everything covered? If not, and that's where you brought up the fire department, number two, discussion. And I don't know, I mean, what we have and what's going to cost. I mean, we're going to be short no matter what there. So that's going to be a discussion as a, as a whole of what really, we're going to do it, how we're going to fund it. So I think that's going to be something that if he's able to come in and within the next work session and bring that to us, I think that's going to have to be, I mean, really laid out of, okay, these are where we can probably take this from. But I don't want to take it away from something else. I want to make sure that we're not. But those are my thoughts that, you know, I wrote down. One other thoughts I wrote down also, and I'll bring it up now, is revamping our recycling area. I think it's been atrocious for a while. I've had many discussions with Mr. Stewart all about it. I was there this weekend. I took a bunch of pictures because, I mean, I had to stop, get out, carry everything in because you can't drive in there. So it's, it's something new thrown in, but it's been on the forefront of my mind for the last couple of years. And the last spring here has been the worst because of the rain we had, you can't even, it's not usable. Needs to be revamped. Do we need to pave it? Do we need to have a turn area in there or whatever it may be, just some kind of different design? But I think those are things that we need to look at in the future. Not saying that we need to use this reserves for that right now, but I know we talked about the parking rec improvement projects. You know, I think a lot of that's going to be hinged on this fall, what happens, especially because of the multiple questions that have to be asked. But I think that one of the main things I thought of right away is, and I've shared this with the mayor, the 3% tax levy, I think need to bring it down. Over the last couple of years, it's been, we've done the 5%, but I think we need to show it to the citizens that we're going to do the right thing with this, so.
As we've discussed, Mr. President, that 3%, we would hope would carry to our residents as close to no increase, because that would be roughly equivalent to the growth in our tax base over that span of time. And we would have to make sure they know this is essentially our way of giving it back to them, this part of the excess that's there. We couldn't carry that out, you know, and, and you know what, this is my last year as mayor, but in, as a courtesy to the rest of the council going forward, this would be a way to, inflation still takes place, everything goes up in price, but we would find a way to hold the line, hopefully to the individual taxpayer for that that year. It would not be sustainable for a long period of time because this, the city does run very lean. Mr. Vedder, could it be more lean than it is now?
Probably.
Yeah. The ad hoc committee did a great job, and all of our department heads did a great job. Last year, a lot of good things happened to find savings, and this is the the effect of that. So please know, whatever we do, and this is now I'm talking to all of our residents, one thing we won't do, we won't waste it, one thing we won't do is start programs that have to be fed out into the future. One thing we won't do is do such a silly thing as write checks to everyone and then have to double down and charge, triple the tax next year. There was a year in the last 15 years where we did a zero or negative levy increase. Then for two successive years, the total between the two years was a 40% increase over those two years. Okay, that's how you recover from a silly tax cut. So we're not going to do that either. But whatever we do, I like your idea, a one-year 3% levy, if we can get to that, I believe we can. But know that that is kind of our way of giving back to the taxpayers. This is their money. And anything we can do to to pay for necessary improvements, like on a fire hall, public safety is our number one objective in our community. So by stabilizing our fire hall for the roof, you know, for water penetration, that's a valid, very valid use of such funds as this. But those are the kinds of things that we will do, is, you know, build value into our community, nothing frivolous, nothing that'll be a cost center later on. Just know, we are here for a value for our people.
Just to clarify, it was a negative 1% boarded in 2012 for the 13 budget year. So that's what happened.
Not smart. Who did that? Was that?
It wasn't me. I wasn't on council yet, so.
Thank you. What was our carryover from last year's budget? Like, what was our surplus? Was it like 300,000 or something like that?
Well, the general fund increase was 743,627.
And that's from last year?
That was the carryover from '23 into '24.
And now we're projecting how much of a carryover this year?
Don't know yet.
We don't know.
We're not, yeah, I wouldn't say we're projecting anything at this point.
Okay, so this, okay, all right. Then that's my question. I agree that we need to keep the tax levy low, lower than normal, because it's gone up a lot over the last two years. I also agree that the green site needs some work. That is, the back area is virtually unusable. And Jason, I don't know how often the guys have to go in on overtime or whatever and clean out the space because people drive in there, 10 feet, they can't go further, and they just dump their stuff. And it blocks the entire space. I know I had a conversation with Jason a couple of weeks ago. We talked about when the green site was downtown, behind like the Blumus and in that open area. And the feedback that we had from that was pretty significantly good, that it was paved and it was able to be used and and it was probably easy to maintain. So, and I've had a conversation with a couple of other residents about the green site, that, you know, something needs to be done to improve the backspace. So if there was one project that I could get behind in the next couple of years, it would be that, so.
We're not jumping on public works on this, it's.
No, it's been, it's been rough, even even in previous years where the back isn't wet and dug up as much. The same thing happens where we have to come in, especially in the spring, fall months, when people are really bringing a lot of stuff down there. Just the way it's set up, people do dump and leave a bunch of open space behind. So we do have to come in pretty much every weekend in the spring and fall and have somebody come in in overtime to push the piles up. So that, that's besides what it looks like now and the challenges now with it all tore up. So we do have, WSN has been working on an estimate for the concrete, not only the space that's there now, but another 50 feet to extend it and remove the fence on two sides because the fence does nothing for us. We can't push against it. You know, people dump big cottonwood trees, logs and stuff on up next to it, and you can't get up to it. So we would put Jersey berries around the outside ideally if we were to do that. And then, like Mark was stating, have some sort of a organized so people could turn in there, turn around in there. And with the concrete being there, it would be, it would just clean it up so much. So the other thing we're talking about is possibly just leaving the gate, don't have a gate, have people just drive in and out and charge all citizens to use, all residents to use the the green site. The gate just, it never works. There's, there's always problems. People are always hitting it. No matter how much money we throw at it and stick into it, it's, it's been like this for years, where it's, it's down more, more than it's actually operational. So, and as far as people coming in from Grand Forks, you hear that argument, there, there may be, but there's a lot of folks, too, that have North Dakota plates that live in East Grand Forks or that go over to their folks' yard, maybe they live in Grand Forks, but their folks live here, do yard work for them and bring it in. There's also some, some rural folks that may sneak in there. But if you're living in Grand Forks, I don't know why you would come across the river to come over here. There's all kinds of dump sites over there that they could dump at. So we don't, we don't see a lot of illegal dumping in there. We do have cameras set up for some of the stuff we can, can find. But, yeah, so those are some of the discussions going on, I guess.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any thoughts on the budget surplus? Anything else, Reed?
Nope, we're good. Thank you.
Summon entertaining motion to adjourn then?
Oh.
Move by Helms.
Second.
Second by Larson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion's carried, means adjourned.